All right. Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me. Good evening. Welcome to the August 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, the applicant will come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. Floor will then be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted unless we ask you for it directly. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have all five members present, and we've got a call. I will call the roll. Ms. Resonity, Mr. Matzo,
Present.
Ms. Bucci, Mr. Landers, and Mr. Donovan is present. Did you guys get a chance to look at the meeting minutes? Okay, any comments, amendments, anything? Look representative. Okay. Anybody get a motion for me?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the meeting minutes for, what was it, July 30th?
All in favor?
Hi.
Were you? You were here. Okay, four eyes and abstain. That was, that was July, not the extra one.
That wasn't the extra one?
Was that the extra one?
That was the extra one. Been a special meeting.
That was the extra one. So there were three eyes and two abstains.
Yeah.
Okay. We're on track again. Okay. We're a couple of minutes early, but we can call people up, right? Yeah, first case of the evening is, excuse my pronunciation, Sayed Siddiqui, 35 Grand Boulevard, use variance for conversion of a ground floor of an existing mixed-use building into two dwelling units in the R2 residential one and two-unit dwelling district. Hi, if you could come on up to the microphone for us, that'd be great. Is the green light on there? These, these mics are a little touchy, so you want to make sure there's a green light on there? Is the green light on? And you have to get real close or like, like me, no one will be able to hear you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm kind of nervous, really. I never attends that type of meeting before.
It's relatively informal. We just happen to be sitting in a square here.
Yeah, my name is Sayed Siddiq. I live in New York City. And I serve in the city and a peace officer for New York City Housing Authority. So, actually, I bought this house on April 26. And my house is a, well, two-floor, one is two-in-it residential, and one is mixed-use commercials. And I'm trying to get a tenant for the commercial last four months. I didn't get a single call for these things. So I applied for the JBA, so. And because of no tenure for the commercial space, because it's a residential area, completely residential, it's a nice residential area. So, and, and for JBA, the criteria you guys described on the paper, I fulfill all the criteria. I'm losing each month a lot of money because I don't have any tenant for the commercial space. And it's very hard to get the commercials to get any tenant for the commercial space either.
Have you ever had a commercial tenant in that space?
No. PBS owner doesn't, PBS owner doesn't have it because he, that's why he took, he doesn't take any permission from the city. He got some residential tenant, and he got the violation for that. And finally, he sold the house. Probably he tried. I'm not sure. And last four months, I'm trying. I put an exit on the ad, but I don't get a single call for that either.
Okay.
And everything is, I mean, I, I mean, I haven't changed anything on the inside. There is a space, I mean, inside, if you get the permission to in it, because there's eight bedrooms inside. There is a kitchen area, there is a toilet area, everything is there. So I, if I get the permission, I just make inside renovation. So that can help me out, not because I'm losing money every month.
That, that, that is.
And after my retirement, I have a planning to come to the city to live in. So my whole gallery, my investment is there because I have three more half years left for my retirement.
Did you say you live upstairs or do you live somewhere else?
No, I live in New York City. I'm living in New York City right now.
Okay. Do you guys have questions for the applicant?
So you said that it was, it's a commercial.
Look closer.
It's a commercial space.
It's a mixed commercial, residential and commercial mixed.
On the first floor?
On the first floor, right.
Okay, but you said they were bedrooms.
I mean, the commercial space, there's eight bedrooms. The layout is eight bedrooms inside, I saw that. And kitchen area is there, toilet is there, because of what happened previous owners. I mean, I don't know how he didn't get that tenant for commercials, or he put it, students about there, I might, I'm not sure. And he got the violation for that. He cleared the violation before he sold the house. Probably he's not getting anybody, but still, there is eight bedrooms there. There is kitchen space there, there is toilet space there, everything's there.
So you were marketing it as commercial space. Did anyone come and look at it?
I put an ad because commercial space, because legally I cannot get it to any residential, because it's illegal. So I put the ad on exit, and nobody, I didn't get any single call still now.
Okay, so it's already been converted from commercial to bedrooms. That's what you're saying?
No, it's not converted. It's there. It's already there because, because, because before there's a dental office. So it looks like office room, office space, eight, eight rooms for the dental things, probably. They have to be there.
So it's not been converted? It still looks like a dental office?
It's still, still the same as it is. So I wanted to do it to get the permission to do it the proper way.
You plan on putting eight bedrooms?
I mean, there's eight office room, so it looks like the bedrooms.
Okay, but what you're in your plans, it said.
Yeah, it's a four and four bedrooms. I want to do it.
So how many kitchens? Is it one big unit or is it three separate apartments?
There's two separate entrance for this, for this, for this dental office. So the space I'm looking for, two in it, there'll be two kitchen, but that's the planning is, and there'll be toilet, two toilets about there too. That's my whole planning is to do it after getting the permission from easement.
So two toilets, two bathrooms for eight bedrooms.
Two in it. Two in it. One is four bed, four bed. And one, each in it, there should be one kitchen, and there should be full bathroom. And there is a couple of space, maybe, it's, might be, might be, I'm not sure, there's just something else I can do it, but there should be full bathroom, full kitchen, and in one apartment, there'll be, another apartment, there should be, I fulfill it three bedrooms. Three or four bedrooms, it depends on the space and full kitchen and bathroom too.
I, I think I can clarify, maybe there, there are two floor plans. One is labeled first floor commercial original. That is the floor plan that currently exists that, that he bought it as. That shows the illegal conversion with an eight-room rooming house and some remaining commercial space. Then there's one labeled first floor commercial concept. That's what he's proposing is two separate four-bedroom units, each with a kitchen and a bath.
Each with one, one, each with their own kitchen and one bath?
Yes, ma'am.
So four bedrooms for one bathroom.
There is a space, I can do it in one half bathroom, but it's, it's, it's in the, I mean, on the, on the planning too, because there's a space, there's a lot of, there is a lot of open space about there. I mean, on this, on this house. I mean.
Right. So, so four bedrooms per, so eight bedrooms total, and is your intent to, to rent these to students? But are you renting it by the bedroom?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I don't have anybody else on this property right now. It's completely empty.
No, your intention of if you, if this goes through.
I can, I can approve the rent student about there because it doesn't allow me to do that, to put it to the family members.
This might be premature, but the, the zoning board does have the ability to say, you could either approve, deny, or approve with conditions or including like a lesser version of what's being asked for. So if you were inclined to allow units to be added there, but thought that four bedrooms are too many, you could always scale that down or you, you have the authority to grant whatever you think is reasonable, even if it's less than what the applicant is asking for. Or you could, of course, are entitled to deny it if you don't think it meets the test of a use variance.
What, what he's looking at are eight people in one room and one bathroom? You're allowed two persons per bedroom? Correct?
He's proposing four beds, one bath for each unit, so he, there, there are two, there are two separate four-bedroom apartments being proposed. Each has its own bathroom.
But you're allowed two persons per bedroom? So that, that could be eight people in one house with one bathroom?
It could be. Yeah, the zoning code doesn't regulate how many people per bedroom. Right.
Do you guys have any questions?
Have you thought about shrinking the first floor space into a smaller commercial space and maybe one unit?
Of commercial space, because it's, it's my understanding, it's a, it's a completed residential area. It's a nice neighborhood. I mean, it's very hard, even though you convert it, you can spend the money, but as per the previous owner, he never got any tenant for commercial space, and I'm doubt, probably I'm not getting any commercial tenant. I mean, I'm paying more high taxes right now because it's mixed commercial and everything included, I know I'm paying every month, I'm losing money, honestly. Because if I don't get tenant, the whole space is emptied.
A question about parking.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so where will these people park?
City has a 35 Grand Boulevard, has an easement with 25.
Right, right. I've been there. I was there this afternoon. So where will these people park? Right, so the, the the parking that you provided
Yes, ma'am.
doesn't seem to be accurate to what is physically there. Okay, there's.
It's, it's agreement with the city and 26.
Right.
28 Grand Boulevard.
Right, right. So, so I went there this afternoon, and it's not physically possible to park 23 cars in that parking lot? It's not.
I have, I have agreement for nine, nine cars for there, not, not so much, only agreement with the city. I can park nine, probably, nine cars, probably, I believe so.
Okay, but there's not, so if you could park nine cars there, where do the people upstairs park?
My upstairs tenant doesn't have any car.
Pardon me?
My upstairs tenant doesn't have any car.
So there's one tenant upstairs?
Yeah, one tenant upstairs.
That does not drive?
She doesn't, she doesn't have any car.
Okay.
She's section eight tenant.
So the parking lot doesn't accommodate that many cars, particularly because it's already a parking lot for a multi-unit building?
My parking lot with the city says, as per my attorney, is with the 28 Grand Boulevards, where I can park nine cars. I'm allowed to.
But if the people there park, the people who live there are allowed to park?
This is the agreement of the city and, and 28 Grand Boulevard. This is the agreement of the city and with 35 Grand Boulevard and in between 28 Grand Boulevard.
Right.
There is an easement.
Right, there is, but the map doesn't match the physical ability to park the cars there. It's even marked off with paint where to park. And there's not nine extra spots for the, that already, for the people there that already live there. In fact, the two of the spots are taken, one car is completely disabled. One spot is not even a driveway or a spot, and there's no access that goes in both ways. It only goes in one, in and out one way. One driveway.
With the 28 Grand Boulevard, I mean, if you want, I can, I can, I can send my law, I can send, because my lawyer can send the notice for that, because that's the one about the house. He told me that. He had the nine-car parking spot allotted for, you can park about there to 28 Grand Boulevard.
Right, so, but did you physically, did you buy that site unseen?
I passed, but I don't go inside, so I'm, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm saying. No, no, no.
You didn't buy it sight unseen, or you did buy it sight unseen?
I, I just passed by. I don't go inside.
I'm still unclear.
I mean, I didn't check on this location physically. I passed by, but I didn't go inside. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Okay, okay. There's an easement for those nine spots, correct?
That's correct. You provided an easement.
Okay, so you have access to those spots?
Yeah.
As part of the easement?
Yes, part of the easement.
Okay. But in this easement, it says there's, there's 23 parking spaces, and there's not. Okay, the easement has overdrawn lines to make it look like there's more spots than there physically is.
I, I'm looking at the map, and I see what you're saying, what they're presenting is a little bit tight. That being said, he has an easement that entitles him to nine of those spaces, so if there are tenants at, what was the address? 26 or 28 Grand Boulevard that are displaced or something, or somehow there's a conflict there. A provision still has to be made for him, his tenants to access those nine spaces that, that he's entitled to them. Just based on, just a, a glance at the easement. So I do see what you're saying.
So if you look.
The map is a little generous.
If you look at the physical map.
Yeah.
Okay, this map that they're submitting, and the spaces are numbered.
Right.
It's not physically possible to have that many cars in those spots where it says there's nine of them. It's a carport for seven. It's not nine spots, it's seven spots, and two of them are already taken with disabled vehicles. So that's five spots. And then there's one that goes sideways. And that's technically not even paid, but.
So the easement says it does grant and release unto the grantee an easement covering any nine parking spaces measuring at least nine by 18 each to be used solely for parking by motor vehicles in connection with use of the above-described parcel. So any of those nine space, so let's say half of these spaces are ineligible physically. He's still entitled to any nine spaces that are available, according to the easement.
According to an easement, that, that the map is incorrect.
As long as there's nine that exist, he's good.
Okay, any other questions? You want to move on to, yes?
Is it your intention to have a stipulation in the lease agreements limiting the number of cars per unit?
I don't, actually, I don't think that way yet, but if, if any recommendation coming from board, I'll take it. I mean, if any opinion, any suggestions, so I'll take it.
If we don't have any other questions, perhaps we move on to more of our, getting closer towards a deliberation and start with perhaps opening the public hearing? Okay. So, let's see. Has this been to the planning, planning commission yet, or does it have to?
It does not. It just, the only thing under review would be the land use here, and since it's not allowed, it goes to the ZBA, not the planning commission.
Okay. Let's see. I will make note for the record, this is a type-two action under secret, no further environmental review is required. And I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for 35 Grand Boulevard for the area or for the use variance. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, you can leave the mic at this point, but hang, hang with us for a little bit. We may have questions for you. But at this point, anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the project, come on forward to the microphone. Thank you very much, sir. We're doing, we're doing good. Good to see you.
Green button, ah, green button. Thank you. It's nice to be in chambers again. Hello, nice to see you. I'm Bob Wessler. I spent eight years as a city councilman, and now I'm the minority leader of the Broome County Legislature. And my friend found this in the desk just now, and so I'm, for old times' sake, I'll put that there. I represent this area. Grand Boulevard is just around the corner from where I live. I live at 166 Helen Street. I, the constituency that I represent has asked me to come and speak about this because they have some concerns. And I was in the offices yesterday, looking at the, at the application. And let me find my notes. First of all, if you look at the conversion concept map, you'll see that the space is divided east-west by an east-west wall that divides it into two spaces. It's a common wall. There is one interior bedroom on the northern apartment that has no window. Okay, it's an interior bedroom with no window. Lack of closet space is also, a lack is abundant. There's a lack of closet space abundant. First of all, turning this property from a commercial to a residential is a good thing for the neighborhood. That is a good thing. And keeping two, yeah, there are no secondary egresses in the plans. There's currently no door on the back of the building, and the plan that you're given in front of you shows a back door. There is no door there. There is no door there. Currently, there is no door. Parking is allowed by easement, and Ms. Bucci, as you pointed out, I was there yesterday, and I did see, I saw, I saw the easement plan, and I saw the existing plan, and there are not 23 parking spaces exempt. It's not, it's not there. So the, the, it's, it's not a, it's not a current easement. It's, it's, it's a, it's an improper easement right now. It, it, it can be, you know, upheld, but it's, it's, it's just not put the way it needs to be. But that's probably the more of the fault of the owner of 26, 28. And not 23, for the easement. This building was for sale in June and July. The application says, was, was this building ever for sale recently? The building has been for sale in June, July, and often until the past three years, for sale. And the, the applicant marked, no, it was not for sale. I, I don't know about the interior, but the exterior windows seem to be too, too high and not necessarily of the size to allow emergency egress. I don't even know if they open enough so one can, can jump out, should they have to. There's that, and it's an interesting plan. One of the things also that was confusing for my, my, my neighbors. The building is an old-fashioned, flat-on-flat, okay, up and, you know, okay. The rear of it was added on, and that's, and they took away an existing kitchens and put the building on so that the flat downstairs and the flat upstairs have no, no, no secondary egress. Okay, they only have their front doors. This actually takes away an existing door, on, on the plan, takes away an existing door that's right there now, where they would put a washing, washing and dryer machine area. So it's just not necessarily a safe plan. Also, honestly, this space is so tight. It's a small space to, to create two apartments out of that small space. Big box, it's maybe 20 by 35, maybe 24 by 35. Putting that in half, it's just not a large space for, for, for four bedrooms. However, having it converted to, to residential is a good thing for the neighborhood. And to get back to my point was, we've got the two flats, and then we have the addition. The way that this was worded, it was though the, you're, you're the building, the addition is a separate building from the two flats, and that's the way this is worded. And so we're getting not three apartments, but four apartments. So there's existing two plus this space, and gentleman wants to convert it into three, into two more apartments of four bedrooms. And these would be tiny bedrooms, small, compact, and I don't know, the, the living space for the design does not is, is not there for, for, for residential enjoyment. There's no, no place to hang out, relax, or, or, or have kids around or play. It's a very limited yard. So, so the tenant, the type of tenant that would be moving in would be not necessarily a family for, for the neighborhood. But other than that, I thank you for your time, and I hope you will contemplate a good decision and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against the proposal?
Yeah, we did, are you, are you gonna ask about the letter? We did get a letter from Eileen Heslin in opposition. Do you want me to sort of summarize it? Do you, so she is opposed to that many units on the first floor. She says the letter that was sent was misleading because it talked about converting the ground floor into two residential units. She also became aware today of what the parking proposal is to accommodate that many people at 35 Grand Boulevard. The way the new owner wants the parking lot set up is not agreeable to the writer and her husband. It's a lot of parking spaces in this residential area. It would be a lot of traffic going in and out of 26 to 28 Grand Boulevard, which is directly next door to the writer. She was looking forward to having someone own 35 Grand Boulevard who would take care of it, not in favor of these plans. And then she had sent previously two emails, so she asked for those two others to be disregarded.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against the application? I'm assuming you're for the next case. Did we get any other phone calls or any other communication?
Do you have any calls, Alan?
Okay. All right. Seeing no one, I would move to close the public hearing for. Seeing no one, I would, uh, move to close the public hearing for thirty-five Grand Boulevard. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that gets to, uh, deliberation on a use variance. And you want to start with just a general discussion before we get into the criteria? I, I do, uh, I appreciate some of the, uh, problems the applicant has had getting a commercial tenant in there. I hear that. How do you guys feel about the, uh, submitted plans? Of the first floor? Yeah, well, is this, that's the old, well, that's not, that's not the post. But it's the general, it's the same. That's the footprint you've got available is right there. Bob's coming with.
Bob's got one for you.
Now, in, in just guesstimating the sizes of the bedrooms, they look like they're going to be barely large enough for a, a double bed.
I mean, we had a similar situation when we did the, there's that project on Glenwood Ave. The rooms were too small. Um, so maybe an alternative plan may be better, um, if we were to go forward with something like this.
I'm really sorry. Could you speak into the mic so Salin can get it?
You hear me now?
Yep.
I said, we dealt with something similar on, uh, a project at Glenwood Ave, um, with small rooms. And I think this is kind of similar to that. You're taking an old building and trying to cram in as many rooms as you can. I don't think that's good for tenants, but I also don't think that's good for the neighborhood. And particularly in light of the parking situation, it's a very busy intersection right there. You have Thomas Jefferson Elementary right around the corner. Um, you know, I live right around the block. I can attest that's a very heavily trafficked intersection. To have cars, additional cars around, uh, it could be a problem.
It, uh, to me, it seemed like a whole lot of bedrooms and a small amount of space.
I agree. Uh, I'm also looking at, like I said, you're allowed two tenants per bedroom. What happens if they did fill it up with sixteen people? You know, I mean, that's, that seems awful tight, especially for just two bathrooms. Not to say it'll happen, but it's a possibility. And then, but if everybody drives a car, you have no parking at all.
Well, I mean, and we've all heard, um, there's, there's a housing, there's a limited housing availability in this area.
Yes.
And it's limited for a lot of certain, uh, groups of people looking for housing. A lot of families are very limited. And so, I mean, the concept of having a space that would serve families is great. But I don't think what's submitted would work well for a small family or a growing family.
I, I personally think if he had less bedrooms, made them larger.
And some storage space associated with some auxiliary spaces. So I'd really like to see a more thought out dividing of the space. And I, I don't know if.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not happy with the floor plan and I don't, personally, I don't see how I could. I agree with, with Bob, the, the concept of more housing, family housing, um, in a residential area is a great idea. Um, but the way it's submitted, I don't, I don't think it's great.
Looking at it too. There's nothing that separates it into two units.
No, there, there's no hard separation. I, I have a problem with the number and availability of ex, uh, exit ways. I, I just don't think it's ready to be considered for approval.
And where are the two kitchens proposed?
It's, did you get?
Yeah.
There's a kitchen on the top left of the plan.
Which is one of the exit ways.
Oh.
For the one unit.
And then that one, kind of the biggest room?
Correct. There's a kitchen combined with a, a living room, sort of like an open concept thing for the lower unit.
Yeah. Not a fan of the proposed layout.
So, and what I'm, what I'm kind of saying and what I'm hearing is, I don't think we're in a, in a position where we're going to want to consider this for approval at this point. Is that right? Does it sound about right? Without some modifications or massaging of the plan?
I agree.
Can we do that?
You can, yeah, you can table it, um, request some changes and table it. I would just, uh, suggest in fairness to the applicant, try to be specific with what you'd like to see. Would you like it? To all be one unit? Would you, would you allow two units with two beds each or maybe give some guidance on how you would like the plans changed?
I don't want to get too specific for the applicant. I'm, I'm talking to you right here as you, and you can say right there. Um, but on behalf of the, uh, board, um, of appeals, I would like to recommend that you, uh, what we're talking about doing is tabling our decision for the next meeting. Or as long as you're ready for the next meeting, or maybe the, the one beyond. But to look at alternates to the two bed, two units, the bedrooms are too small. That has to be reconfigured. There has to be auxiliary space for the, for it to be a living situation. If you're talking two family units, they need a proper setup for a family to, to conduct family business. It can't be just bed, 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 bed. And you have to have, um, the provision for adequate exiting, um, because if, if God forbid, anything happens in, in one of the bedrooms, the kitchens, where there's a fire, you need to be able to get out safely. Okay? Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna have to ask you, if you have something to add, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the microphone because we have to be able to capture it. Yeah.
Hello?
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, if I get the approval for user variant, if there is any suggestions, any changes, I mean, for architectural design, uh, I mean, uh, I can, I can put it there. Uh, my son is architect engineer, so. So if any suggestions comes out of there, if you want to shrink the bedrooms for open space, I'm willing to do it. I mean, I'll take your suggestion, anything you.
Okay, but what, I just want to make sure you understand what we're talking about. We're, we're not in a position to approve this tonight. Where I, I get the feeling we're leaning towards this use makes sense to go to a residential rather than the commercial mixed use that it, that it is existing under. But we're not happy with the floor plan. What we, what we would like to see is maybe some three-bedroom or even two-bedroom units on the first floor. It's well separated, proper exiting. Anything other criteria? Storage would be nice for the occupants in, in the building.
Did you talk about egresses already?
Yeah, I was talking, the emergency egress is, it's not adequate in the drawings right now. Okay, you, I think you're coming in going by the front door. The two units that you've, you've.
My question is, is the first floor, uh, do I need the egress? Because, uh, first of all, the, the window is set it by commercial, but all the window going to change to go down.
You have to be able to exit from any bedroom in the, in the units.
Yeah, but, but the first floor window is, is a setup for a commercial window, but this window, it should be, we have the planning to, all the wind should be go down. So the first floor tenant can go at, I mean, get her from the window, so. The window, all the window going to be changed.
There's, there's one defined exit on the first floor. There needs to be another one defined somewhere. And maybe a hallway to access that.
There's a two separate entrance, I mean, for the two units, whole separate entrance. And, and window, all the window now is up. Mr. Wesley's right, while the window is up, but all the window going to go down. It should be coming to residential window.
Windows be used as a designated egress? I can't, I can't imagine that'd be. And it'd have to be an accessible exit way, right? Unless the window is floor to ceiling, it's not going to be an accessible window.
Yeah, all, all the window, not just the way window is set up, it's not accessible for the, for to get out. But all the window is going to come down. I mean, good, easy access because I have the planning on the planning. All the window going to come down. This is, should be because the residence, the window setup is a commercial. It's not good for the residencies. The residential window should be go down. So people can have the access, forget, anything happens, they can get out.
Right.
And all the window is going to go down. So the, the tenant can, and God forbid, something happened, they can get her from the building.
Okay, I just want to make sure we give you enough information so you come back next time with a plan that, that has a chance of passing. Too many bedrooms, not well-defined, and egress needs to be well-defined.
Yeah, second floor, only second floor tenant has the egress to come down the first floor.
Second floor, we're not even, we, we're not addressing, but.
Okay.
We're only, we're focused on the, on the use of the first floor. So.
So my question is, is the first floor, I do, I need an egress for that? Because first of all, all the window is going to go down.
If you show us where everyone can get out of there safely in case of a fire, that would be acceptable.
All right.
As long as you address the other, we have a, we have a problem with four and four. Three and three or two and three would be a much more, better use of the space as we see it. Or two and two bedroom would be even better.
Uh, the total space is almost twenty-two hundred square feet. The whole commercial space. Twenty-two hundred square feet.
On that one floor, I don't.
The commercial space.
Is it that much?
It's not.
It doesn't look like that much. Do you know square footage?
Forty by sixty.
Yeah. I, I think he's counting the whole.
Bedroom is definitely too small.
The whole structure is forty-eight hundred square feet, so.
Um, the assessor's records are not always the most accurate, but, uh, they're showing apartments two existing, about fifteen hundred square feet there. And then it says walk-up office, three thousand two hundred ninety-one square feet.
Okay. Still, I believe four in the space that you're looking at on each side is too many. And I would be very surprised if that was approved. I, you could surprise me, but come back with, uh, with a, with a plan that we can work with. You're welcome to confer with these guys. Um, they can offer some direct assistance, I'm sure. If you have direct questions as you're going through the redesign.
Okay.
Okay.
So instead of denying it, we'd like to table it for the next meeting or the meeting after.
As long as you're able to look at and change your floor plan by then.
Okay, I, not the next meeting, the following meeting, I'll submit that.
Okay, we can work with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it for your time.
Thank you. All right, so then I would make a motion to, uh, that we're going to, it's until, uh, could I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I didn't, did I? Thank you, Bob. Uh, motion to close the public hearing for thirty-five grand. You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for keeping me on track. I lose my way at times.
Could I just confirm that he wants to wait two months or did he think you wanted him to wait two months? Do you want to come back in September or October? So I mean, it's up, you, 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 you can leave it for October if you'd like. I just wanted to make sure that.
If he's ready for September, I, it doesn't matter to us. I just want him to be ready.
Um, and there's one more thing too about the egresses. Um, if you want everything to be code, code compliant, you really should involve code enforcement and, um, requirements.
And ready.
And, yeah.
So the plant, the plans need to be submitted. How long before our next meeting?
At least the, at least two weeks.
Before we actually have the meeting, whether it's next month or the following.
Right.
Can code review the submitted plans?
They can give an opinion on these. These aren't construction level drawings, but they can give an opinion. The other thing to.
Very helpful, though.
Yeah, we can get comments from them. The other, the other thing to consider is that the applicant would need building permits to do this. And at that point, there would be a full sort of code review. And if they cannot be built out in a code compliant way, then, then he wouldn't be able to do it. So there, there is that sort of next check in, in the process.
Okay.
Um, but we can get comments on the floor, on the, on the, uh, floor plan.
You, you're following where we're going with that? Are you, are you okay with that? What we're talking about is we would like to have your drawings looked at just for a comment from the code enforcement group. They're associated with, but not part of this, uh, group directly. For things like egress and ADA and code, code compliance. So when you submit your, your drawings for the next time we meet, we'll have them take a look at it beforehand so we can address any issues identified there. Oh, we, we'd, we'd rather have you do it once and do it right. Yep. Okay, so we'll see you in
Uh, it's.
September, we'll see you in September. Thank you.
And except we'll be in touch with him to kind of summarize everything tomorrow.
Okay, you will be getting a call to, uh, let you know where, where things stand from planning staff. Thank you.
Uh, the only thing is we'll have to have a motion to, to table until September because your last motion was in October.
I would like to make a mo, a motion to, uh, amend our tabling, um, and to, uh, the motion is to table it just for one month for thirty-five grand. Can I get a second right here? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Back on track? Okay, thank you very much. Um, last case of the evening is forty-nine Court Street. Applicant on my paper, it says Matso signs.
And I would like to recuse myself from that.
I, uh, can we, you just notice? I think you should make a motion. You're recusing.
Okay.
And, uh, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I think I want.
Thank you. And, uh, and I will make note that there are now four members of the, uh, zoning board of appeals since Mr. Matzo has recused himself from this case. Is there someone here representing forty-nine Court Street who would like to address the board? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Holland.
Is, is your green button on?
Yes.
Okay, you need to hear me a little closer.
I'm Joe Holland from Matso Signs.
Hi, Joe.
I'm Joe Legoria. I'm representing Visions Credit Union as the tenant.
Okay. Welcome. Tell us about your, uh, proposed, uh, area variance for signs.
Okay, uh, visions would like to have, uh, some new signage at their location at forty-nine Court Street. Uh, they currently have, uh, signage on Washington Street. Uh, but the visibility, uh, is not capturing their, their clients. So they propose to take those two signs down as they currently are, uh, and place one on the bank that is, uh, on Court Street. And also one right above their location where the awning is currently. As well as some letters in the back that, that would be unlit, uh, in, in the parking lot area. Uh, but the, this puts us over the use variance, uh, and the size variance. Uh, but, uh, we, we feel that, uh, this is proportionate to the building, uh, the signs that we have proposed. This is proportionate to the building, uh, the signs that we have proposed.
So the variance is to add one additional, one sign's permitted, you're asking for a total of two. And you're requesting them to be just shy of thirty-five square feet where twenty feet, twenty square feet is allowed.
Yes, by code, correct, yeah.
Okay.
And with the, uh. The businesses nearby, uh, directly across from the location where this one would be, there's a, uh. Uh, Italian pizza restaurant that has two. Signs that I think are probably twenty feet long each, right on one on Washington, one on Court Street.
So they're twenty feet long and one foot tall?
No, I think they're, I think they're probably. Three or four feet tall. Uh, just from looking at them from the ground. I think the current ones are banners, maybe. I'm not sure what those are, but previously Oakdale Pizza had been there and that, those were permanent signs that were there. I don't know the status of their. Legality or not, but, uh. Uh.
Do you guys have any questions for the applicant?
Are these illuminated?
Yeah, so they're going to be internally illuminated. Only the lettering is going to light up. It's going to be, uh, a stencil cut aluminum cabinet. Uh, with, uh, acrylic that will be placed inside, LED lights will be inside that, so it will just give that soft glow of the letters themselves.
And how many hours a day will they be illuminated?
Typically, all our signs are on a, um, photocell timer, so adjusting by daylight, nighttime, so when it gets dust to dawn. Um, typically, we can put them on time clocks if need be, but typically we're on photocell.
Do they stay on all night?
They do stay on all night typically, but again, we can adjust to a time clock and make sure they only stay on for a limited amount of time. Um, the bank's not open typically, uh, five o'clock, um, is, is the hours of operation that we would terminate. Um, typically in the winter time. You know, we might want them on a little longer than that, but we could certainly. Have them turn off.
You move that a little closer.
Yeah, we can certainly adjust those to, uh, to turn off if need be.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is that, um, is there a walk-in twenty-four hour ATM?
There is.
By the picture.
There is, that's on Washington Street.
On Washington, right.
Yep, yep, yep.
Right, so you'd almost want the signs to be illuminated.
Yep.
Twenty-four seven, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, and, and just to let you know, by New York State ATM Safety Act, we do have illumination of lighting just for safety.
Right, okay.
Uh, at the ATM twenty-four hours, so that's even on during the day.
Okay, thanks.
Can it go, go right ahead?
Are there any residential units across? Away from the bank? Second floor?
There are in the old Ellis Brothers, uh. Location, I believe there are apartments on the upper stories here.
And have we had any, um, correspondence from anybody in the yay or nay? And that lives there?
I don't think we got any public comment, no.
Nothing.
No.
Okay. Yep. I just want to thank the members of the board and just, uh, to put a little context around why we're coming to the, um, table tonight. Is Visions has just renewed its lease, uh, for an additional ten years commitment downtown. And, uh, as part of that, we're looking to reinvest into the building. We did have the opportunity to walk with the building owner. One of our challenges, um, you know, has been visibility and, and with new traffic downtown, students and, and new businesses. Um, obviously, our business, uh, we'd like to promote that and Court Street is an active street. Um, sometimes the, the, uh, current signage down Washington Street is limited, especially to let people know that there is an ATM, so. Uh, bringing a sign up to Court Street was, uh, important to us and, and really the, the origin of this request, so thank you.
Right. Alright, um. Question's done.
Now, do we have to have a? We have to open a, a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, uh, did we get any correspondence on this application? At all? Okay. Alright, um, then I would make a motion to open the public hearing for. Forty-nine Court Street. I got a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance, please come forward. I'm imagining he's with you guys. If you want to speak in favor, you can. You don't have to, I'm not gonna twist your arm. Okay, um. Then I guess at this point I would, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing for forty-nine Court Street. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. You can take a seat. And we will get into the criteria. And da-da-da-da. I will make note that this, this. This is a. Seeker unlisted action per. Oh, but I have the seeker. What is, am I getting messages here? Which is. I have to go through seeker and. And I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the zoning board of appeals be a lead agency for seeker. Could I get a second? All in favor? Aye. Alright. And again, this one only is seen by us, right? It doesn't have to go to planning.
Have to go to the planning commission. It will be subject to card review.
Okay. Very good. So, that being said, I have to go through some criteria for se- uh, seeker that's environmental quality review. Um. And staff does a very nice job of pointing things out to us that could be, um, applicable by leaving blanks here. Uh, so we're looking for things that are. More than a small or negligible impact on, on the environmental quality, so anything moderate to large is what we're looking for, making sure that. We're not missing something here. So bear with me, I gotta look through this. Will the proposed action, and this is by signage, I'm talking about the number and size. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Well, sure, it's, it's in conflict with zoning because it's not exactly meeting, but I would say it would be a small impact. Okay, uh, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? Excuse me. This is another one that is not checked. Um, I would say that it would be a small to negligible effect on the character quality. Of the existing community probably and actually an improvement. To, to us, to an extent. Uh, will the proposed action have an im- impact on the environmental characteristics that caused an establishment? The establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking? Or walkway? No, it should not affect that. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Should not have an impact there. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Should not affect that at all. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic archaeological? Architectural or aesthetic resources, and I believe from what you said, Claude will probably weigh in on that. Although from what I see, it would be small to no impact for this. Variance. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Again, no. So having gone through the criteria, I would like to make a motion, uh, that we have a negative seeker. Uh, report. Could I get a second? All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Now we can get on to the criteria, right? Okay, and there's still five. Undesirable change, and this is to allow the variance. Does it make an undesirable change? Was there a reasonable alternative? Is it substantial request? Is it create an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions and was it self-created?
Kelly, really quickly, sorry to interrupt, just for the sake of the record. For each of those criteria, could you? Sort of come to a conclusion on each of the variances, one being the extra sign, the other being that one sign on court being too big?
Yep. Good point. Thank you. Um, yeah, so we're looking at two different variances, both area variances, one for an extra sign and one for sign being too large. Twenty, uh, thirty-four and a half square feet versus twenty, which is allowed by code. Okay, um, size of sign. Is it undes- undesirable change to grant this? Size of sign? I would argue that with the, uh. Buildings or, uh, businesses in the immediate area and elsewhere in the city that are larger. Right there that, uh, I'm pretty sure won't even be noticed. That it'd be abo- above. In size.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, maybe it's had a, is it, uh? Was there a reasonable alternative? Yeah, they could have gone with the size that is allowed, but I think they were, they're losing some visibility. And as stated by the applicant, the scope of the buil- the size of the building. And we've done this before. If you have a very large building, a small sign looks kind of silly on it. So it needs, it needs to be in scale with the building.
Right.
So. I think, I think they worked as. They kept as, as, uh, close to the, as the size allowed as possible. Is it a substantial request to make them this large? I would argue no.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's percentage wise, it might be a good, good bit, but I go back to the si- size of the building and the, you know, to scale. Um, will it have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? And we talked about the lighting. I mean, just the size of it, I don't think is gonna have that much because not all of the sign is illuminated, just the letters. So. I'm not, I, I'm not. Very worried about there being an adverse impact. And was it self-created? Sure. And thank you for creating. And now to the number of signs, same criteria. Is it an undesirable change to allow two where one is permitted? This is a pretty interestingly shaped parcel.
I would argue that it's not undesirable. I think the city and the community have an interest in making sure that. People can see the businesses that are down that strip.
Yeah, you need to be able to find it.
Yeah.
I think it's a desirable rather than undesirable.
Agreed.
Absolutely. Was there a reasonable alternative? Yeah, they could have gone with what's allowed, um. But I don't think that's reasonable because of wanting. The public needs to know that they're there. It's, it's a valuable thing to have available. Is it substantial request? One versus two? I don't think so.
I don't think so. It's because of location.
It's a very interesting location. Very interesting. Uh, will it cause an adverse impact on physical or, uh, environmental conditions to a lot? No, it won't be noticeable. And yes, again, it was self-created. Any more discussion? Do I, do we need more discussion that you can see? Okay. Marina, how about a couple of motions?
Can I combine them into one? I can do two, but.
Which should we, can we combine them into one or two? She'd like two, I believe.
Motion to grant an area variance to allow two projecting signs where only one is permitted.
For forty-nine Court Street?
Forty-nine Court Street.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
And motion to allow a thirty-four and a half foot square feet. Bah. Alright, motion to permit a thirty-four point five square foot projecting sign where twenty square feet is the max allowed in a C two downtown business district. For forty-nine Court Street.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much.
Strike my Bible from the record.
Huh?
Strike my battle from the record.
Make it so up there. Keep that listening. Okay, your, uh, variances have been approved. Thank you very much for coming to the board. Good luck on your next steps. Um, do we have any other business?
No.
Did I, I, did I close the public hearing and everything or else? Oh, good. Like, like, they started to blend together too. Uh, motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you very much.